Okay, I'm gonna... Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, May 26, 2020, regular meeting of the Stafford School Board. I will ask each board member to register their attendance tonight, since we have some online and in our North Stafford location. Ms. Patricia Haley, Rock Hill, Missouri.
Holly Hazard, Hartwood District.
Emily Young, Harrisonville.
Susan Randall, George Washington.
Sarah Chase, Falmouth.
Why is it?
Dr. Warner, are you online?
Sorry.
Elizabeth Warner, Griffiths-Widewater.
I'm in Hollerback, Akwada District.
All right. I believe that we have a forum, all members are present. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of our agenda. Ms. Hollerback, do you have a motion? Turn your mic on. We need your mic, Ms. Hollerback.
I'm going in between tabs, sorry. I make a motion to approve the agenda with a minor change. I'd like to remove the three items, and I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me because I wasn't fast enough, that Ms. Boatwright was going to present to us this evening for information.
Would those be 8.05, 8.06, and 8.07 from our information agenda?
That would be correct.
Secondly... All right. It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, removing with the removal of 8.05, 06, and 07.
Yeah, removing it and adding it perhaps to the next meeting, or maybe you have another idea on how to handle that one.
Let's see, on the motion, if there's any discussion? No. I would just like to say to the board members, is there an appetite for these three items to have a work session regarding these items, or to bring them in two weeks to add to the agenda? So I'll go around and just double-check with everybody what, how they would like to handle them.
I'm fine, we've had a need for information. I mean, that's me.
Okay. Ms. Young?
Okay. Are these the ones that we have one-on-one meetings with?
Yes.
So I don't see a need to have a work session on board with having that information. As a matter of fact, I'm not even sure why we're meeting them, but since he's the one of the board, I will go along with that.
Ms. Randall? I would also be unable to them coming back to the next meeting, I don't need a work session.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I had a meeting along with Ms. Randall and Ms. Boatwright earlier this week, so I'm fine with bringing them back for information. I don't need a work session.
Thank you. Dr. Warner?
After meeting with Ms. Boatwright and Ms. Hollerback, I also do not need a work session, and I think adding them to the information item for next agenda is perfectly adequate.
All right. And Ms. Hollerback?
I'm fine with whatever the board wants to do.
Okay. I just wanted to check with everybody, make sure, just please cover some topics of whether we wanted to do that. All right? All those in favor of approving the agenda with the amendment, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? All right. Hearing none, the motion is approved unanimously. Moving on to 3.01, that will be Dr. Kizner and his update regarding COVID-19.
Okay, thank you. Some of this information you have heard before, and parents and staff have read in my Friday's letter, but I want to again reiterate, and there will be some new information also. So we are looking primarily at three options for the 2021 school year, and these options are not necessarily options that will be in isolation. One is to continue with the remote learning, as we've been doing since mid-March. Second is to do the traditional face-to-face learning. And the third is a hybrid, which would be students learning remotely, and students would participate in the traditional face-to-face. Again, as you know, this, we've been saying this has been a fluid process, because it is fluid. As you know, today, the governor announced that after Friday, in public buildings, anyone 10 years older would have to wear a face mask. So I say this because I appreciate the school board and the public being patient. We don't want to go too far ahead and state something, and then to discover that things will change either by the governor or Department of Education. Saying that, we did learn today from Dr. James Wang, now State Superintendent, that any day now, it could be tomorrow, but definitely within the next two weeks, the governor will make some of that announcement as it relates to K-12 education for the 2021 school year. What he did state, and what we all expected, is that it will be a phase-in process, there will be some indicators that will help school systems make a decision when it will be the right time to have more of the traditional face-to-face. I think the school board, I believe, I know the school board joins me in that our decisions will be driven mainly on health factors, but we also recognize that, in my opinion, that there is no substitution to the traditional face-to-face teaching and learning. I would also tell you that we are planning, we've been planning for weeks, and whenever a decision has to be made, I feel like Stafford's going to be in a good position to implement what we need to implement, with also a recognition that we'll adjust when we need to adjust. Some issues, such as social distancing, capacity restrictions, other health requirements such as masks, temperature checks, et cetera, we are going, we are factoring in in our planning. We also know that we need to have flexibility of instruction. We need to plan for flexibility for our staff and students based on their health conditions. We have to have flexibility, and I'll just call the term "hotspots", when there are certain locations within Stafford, certain schools within Stafford, that may have students, staff, and others that are impacted, tested positive by COVID-19. And I would also tell you that we are designing a tiered level, T-I-E-R-E, of remote learning based on the needs of our students. We talk a lot about tiered instructional support. As we enter the new school year, we must personalize the remote learning based on the instructional learning needs of individual students. I think, we'll tell you, in my judgment, studying this the last couple of months and being on many different task force, remote learning is going to be a significant component of our instruction for the 2021 school year. I don't see any way that won't be a significant part. I'm not suggesting it will be our only instructional delivery model, but I will tell you it will be a big part of it. I also believe you know that we did send a survey out to parents to get their feedback on their experience so far on remote learning. It's not closed until Thursday, so I don't have any... When we get the findings, I will definitely share it with the school board. On next Tuesday, I get Coach Al, Director of Technology, and I will be at the board supervisor meeting to discuss funding, discuss and funding the purchase of additional Chromebooks. With the need, our students have access to their own individualized Chromebooks, not a Chromebook per family, but Chromebooks per student. And I also will tell you, and we were talking a little bit about this before the meeting begins, we're in an era where we should not be sharing materials. We should not be sharing things that are high-tech, like playground equipment, gym equipment, Chromebooks, science equipment, pens, crayons, books. So Chromebooks, as you know now, students go to the base of a Chromebook cart, they take the Chromebooks, they put them back, and another student has another day or another class that shares that Chromebook, and that would not be at all a best practice. I also, I know the school board knows this, but the county received CARES Act money, money prior to the COVID-19 response, and we submitted a letter to the county asking for support, mainly in two areas. Again, we anticipate that we'll be putting a lot of resources in making sure our buildings are disinfected and clean, and also the delivery of meals. Right now, the meal distribution program is covered for the cost of the meals and the cost of the nutrition employees, that the transportation employees, we have budgeted to a few thirty, but after July 1, that would be an additional expense, and we are asking them to help offset that expense. So, again, I just want you, as a school board and the public, to know that we will keep you fully informed, and I feel pretty confident that our staff are taking the necessary steps to be prepared for the opening of school. Thank you.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is usually our citizen comments. Again, in our new age, we are not having the members of the public join us in our public buildings. Of course, that does not mean that there is not a way to communicate with the school board. There is the, is email reaching out to your members. This is not, of course, meant to not hear from our public. We do want to, so for those who are listening, please make sure that you go ahead and send information to us. So, after we've that, then we're going to go back to our superintendent on other comments, and I guess we will just also wish our superintendent, Dr. Kizner, a belated happy birthday, and more comments?
Again, Friday's our last day of school, and you saw as you drove into the North Stafford parking lot, the pictures of our students, and that's the P.E. at Oak High School. And I cannot emphasize enough, from pre-K to grade 12, for our teachers and principals, and everyone, bus drivers, and everyone have been dealing to reach out to students and families. And tomorrow, I think, or the 28th, is the senior walk, a lot of our elementary schools. So we're trying to be as normal of an experience for our students, and I want to thank everyone. I also want to mention one thing. My letter last week, I told parents that I was not going to be writing them every week. I will start that up in July, and I will take this as a compliment, because you have learned I have no problem complimenting myself or taking compliments, that I heard from, you know, a handful of parents that didn't think it was a bad idea if I would continue writing to them more frequently. And so I will commit to two letters per month, and then in late July, start a weekly one. And of course, as things develop and school board makes decisions, I will obviously write other letters. And then finally, I want to publicly recognize Ms. Amy Ivory, who accepted the position effective July 1 of her warning to be the new principal at Drew Middle School. Currently, she is the Stafford High School Assistant Principal. Prior to that, she was principal for, assistant principal many years at Drew, and she was an English middle school and English and math teacher for many years. So she was a unanimous decision of the committee, and I know she's very, very excited to return back to Drew Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. Our next item on the agenda are our consent items. Is there a motion?
I should approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Got it. Now we got it. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Are there, are there any items that any member wishes to remove from the consent items? All right. Hearing none, then we will be voting on all four consent items. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries unanimously. All four items are approved. Moving on to our action items. First action item, is there a motion to, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the contract to ABM Services for contracted custodial cleaning.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about this particular item?
Madam Chair, I have to abstain from this decision because of, I have a friendship with someone in the higher-ups of ABM.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. Are there any questions? I know we discussed this, that cleaning is going to be of paramount concern coming in the next year, were there follow-on questions? Yes, Ms. Young?
I just want to know if there's going to be an opportunity to at least have something that we could put in place here, or an amendment, or some kind of opportunity if things get to a point where we need to have more help and more assistance in this COVID period, that they could be, were able to assist us with that? Because like right now, it's set as it was last year, right?
We did think you wanted to talk about that.
Yeah, yeah. So we added additional language on this contract. One, so that we have priority service over their other customers. And two, the ability to negotiate the contract, big contract, to add services or reduce services if the situation requires.
And is there pricing with that, or is that just open language?
It's open language right now, because we don't know what the extent of that production or additional services would be. We have a negotiated hourly rate for the additional services with them that would be used to...
Because we think that we could always have that in there, simply because, you know, they could then hold us, you know, a date, so like this surprise is capable of leaving.
Well, we do have an additional hourly rate charge if we need additional services.
Are there any other questions from board members?
No.
Okay. I would just like to say, I would, I appreciate that Mr. Fulmer and your negotiating team took to heart some of the concerns that we had, especially as we had talked about it during the budget, about cleaning and other services, and again, CARES Act and other money can be used for these purposes, so should those be necessary, and I appreciate that those are part of the contract. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And is there, and...
I abstain.
All right. Please note for the record, Ms. Randall has abstained from voting on action item 7.01. The next item is item 7.02. Is there a motion?
I move to approve 7.02.
Second. Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Fulmer, is there any, do you want to give the, like, one or two sentences on this one, or?
Yeah, sure. So I just want to point out that the stipend amounts have been adjusted to be, to match the same annual stipends that we awarded in the prior year. The only pro-rated stipends would be for teachers that were not here for the entire year. So they either started, for instance, in November, and only tall from November to the end of the year, we would have reduced for those couple of months at the beginning of the year they weren't here, or if they happened to leave mid-year, we would have reduced their stipend.
Are there any questions from board members? Ms. Young?
Yeah, of course, I wanted to make sure, because it's been a little bit, and I'm getting old, so. The stipends. If there's no activity in that specific program, will they still get the stipend?
So, the way the Virginia Code reads is if they have those students on their roster, then we would count them towards that calculation for the average of exceeding 150. So each situation could be, we'd have to look at that, but chances are, unless we're completely slow, cold start this year, or something very dramatic, they would still receive a stipend.
Were you speaking specifically about other stipends? Not, not, not the 150 students?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was speaking about the 150.
May I make a comment?
Sure. Dr. Chase?
Yep. So I just wanted to thank Dr. Kizner and Mr. Fulmer for going back to find the additional money so that our teachers were sort of treated consistently with respect to stipends. So thank you very much.
All right.
Are there any other comments? The only comment that I'd like to make, I too echo those, thank you for bringing that to us. I would like the school board members to receive though, a list of the classes that were covered by these stipends. I understand the PE, but just to really understand which of those classes are operating at that level, and it may have been provided at an earlier time, but once you've now done the analysis, I think that was just helpful for the board to also know our critical areas, and also for planning going forward. Is that something, Dr. Kizner, that we...
And, Ms. Chairwoman, can we include the school for each of those classes as well?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Yes, that would be great. That was kind of... All right. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our information items. Our first item is approval of the corrective action plan for the Stafford Head Start non-compliance finding. I don't know if, is Ms. Massey or anyone on regarding this item?
Who was the one that called the meeting, or was it just...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Do you want to just give the quick overview of it, Ms. Massey? I figured that's actually just easier, and then I'll see if there are any questions from board members.
Yes, ma'am. Anytime that we have a safety or compliance issue, we are mandated to self-report. And back in December, we had a child that was left in a restroom for five minutes without an adult present, so we had to self-report that, and now we have to do a corrective action plan, because safety is always our first priority, and supervision is, you know, paramount. This should not have happened, and so we have a plan, but we have to present that to the federal government because of their concern for safety as well before the middle of June. So we need the board approval, because they don't want us to do a corrective action plan or be out of compliance without the board's knowledge. So that is where we are at this point.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Massey? I will just make one comment, but also the Policy Council for Head Start has reviewed this action as well, and has approved this particular way forward. So I just wanted to let you all know that Head Start Policy Council on last Wednesday also examined this and agreed with this particular moving forward.
I have a few questions. The bathroom is in the restroom in the classroom?
Ms. Massey, could you hear, Ms. Young? Was the restroom in the classroom?
I did. The restroom was actually in the front foyer. This was a late opening, and the classroom was not in their usual routine, and they had stopped in the front foyer to use the bathroom, because it was a late opening.
All right. Any other questions? All right. If not, we will move on to the information item 8.02, approval of the 20... Questions concerning those? I do believe the note is that there have not been any changes to the fees. Is that correct?
Madam Chairwoman, I have a question.
Sure. Dr. Chase?
Yep. So my question is just, some of these fees are for events that potentially could not happen this year. What, what happens in that case?
What we did this year also, we reimbursed families for fees that were paid for events that did not happen.
Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Dr. Chase, speak into the question this time, okay? Because, yes. So my question was the same. I was thinking even further than that. Should we even do this at this point in time, or wait? Like, do we, do we have to do this right now?
Your policy is that annually you adopt fees, and this way we inform parents of the fees for the coming school year.
Because we know some of these parents that usually don't get charged, but now we have a larger pool, and I'm wondering if we should know which ones they are instead of just charging them, to find out if they, those fees should be going to some of these parents?
I think what you're doing tonight is adopting the fees and then letting the administration here to on how we collect the fees, and recognizing that in some families right now, this may not be the right time to do it.
Dr. Kizner, if I could just make that comment. This is just for us to approve what, in the ideal world, this is what is normally charged. However, the one comment I would make, and this came up several years ago, it may have been remedied, was that all fees had to be paid upfront the first week of school. I would hope that we, as a board, would reconsider whether those had to be paid that, that first week. There may be one or two fees potentially, but maybe not all of the IP, AP, all of those. So just, and that's something that doesn't have to be resolved tonight, but I hope that we will talk at least with our, especially our high school principals, on really what they think as well regarding the collection part. Ms. Haley?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to relook at that JROTC fee. I know we set that at $100 because we provided sweat suits and things like that, but perhaps we need to look at what we're charging for and see if we can cut that back, because $100 is, is much out of line with, with all the other fees that we have, even the rentals of the chorus and the band, you know, around the $50, $65 range. And I know JROTC is getting more and more popular, and we actually, I think we're going to hire another instructor. So if we could take a look at that. I, I know what we're trying to do is not increase any of the fees, but I...
We could call some neighboring school systems and just get an idea, or, I don't, I was, I don't know how we decided the fees, when we set them.
Right. Well, regardless of when we set them, today is a different world, and families are, you know, in a different financial situation. And I know we do waive fees for students that are... And I know we do waive fees for students that are eligible for the free lunches. But there may be a number of other students whose families may not be able to afford that. And I would not want to see a child miss out on participating in JROTC because they couldn't afford it. Or maybe we need to broaden the scope of the students that we waive the fees for or what consideration we go in. So that would be something I'd like to have when this comes back to us. I would like to, you know, have just some general information about who is eligible for having these waived or having these reduced, as well as you suggested, if we could set up some new plans. But that $100 just stands out in light of all the other fees that are in here. And some of these fees are very, very modest and some of the. Required for those, but the fees are really the minimums.
Let me take it back to my statement. I know the $100, like you said, it looks high, but it also depends on what they're getting for that $100. And even though other amounts, they look minimal, they may be minimal to one of us, but it's not minimal for that parent. And I will go back to say that all of the fees, not just JROTC, we need to look at all of the fees and do that for all the parents that are now probably struggling to pay anything. And so with what you just said about looking at a payment plan, I just think that we need to look at, I mean, not even having it at this point in time until we have more information on what we're going to have, what it's going to look like. Are we going to have our JROTC or are we going to have a bunch of kids running the hallways? Or, you know, what the process is going to be.
So two things. Remember, I know you know this, these fees generate revenue to turn around the support program. So I'd like to talk to the staff that are leading these efforts and to get their opinion on, you know, again, what are these fees used for? I think everybody's raising good points, but just to reduce the fees, I'm imagining there's expenditures tied to these fees. And so I just, I'm agreeing with all of you. My research would be want to talk to the principals, to talk to the federal agency to sense of what these fees are supporting because then we'll have a better understanding of these fees. If we're making, which I would not be supportive of, if we're making profits, we're getting more revenue than our expenditures, then I would have to ask, why are we doing that?
Madam Chairman, I say something. So I know we're just, we are just, not today, but the next time, just approving this as a template for parents for information only. And, you know, as we're talking through, one of the things, you know, to be even aware of is that we have these fees and that number of people that aren't going to be paying may increase. But the, and we want these students to obviously participate because that's very helpful to them in their high school experience. But as like Dr. Kizner was saying, these clubs still have their cost that they have to keep up in these fees by getting them from a bare minimum of students. Maybe what keeps that club in that particular school going. But also keeping in mind, as you look at these fees, is that you're, everybody's going to pay a class dues and then these other fees on top of. So if your child's in multiple activities and things like that, it's kind of like a compounding cost. But I think the main idea for us tonight is that this is just to advertise to our families what we're considering. But I also agree, like, I would be very curious to see why 100 for the JROTC. I appreciate you getting that.
I just wanted to reiterate, what I'm looking for is the basis of the fees. And I do remember when we set the $100 and it was reasonable because we provided sweat suits. And everybody knows how much sweats cost. But at this point, it may be, we might look at, you know, not having them. I don't know. I'm not the position to make a recommendation, but I do know that $100 is a lot and you may have more than one student who wants to participate. And I see a difference between the clubs and the classes. And the chorus and the band, the ones that are credit classes in the JROTC, I would look at somewhat differently from some of the clubs because the clubs do have to be self-supporting. But the classes, I mean, we pay for expenses for most of the other classes. And with chorus and the band, it's basically a youth loan rental. I don't know. I mean, I'm not suggesting that, but I'm suggesting that we take a look at it, particularly where the classes are, because I don't want to see a student not choose to participate in one of these activities that because there is a cost associated with it and they, if they are not eligible under our prior waiver requirements to have those fees for them.
I'll have Dr. Nichols meet with the high school principals, review these fees and see if there's some adjustments, justification, and see if they come back with a recommendation. The amount of.
And also who is, what is our criteria for eligibility to be, have it wagered reduced? I'd like to just listen to that.
Is your policy in there? I thought that was, I maybe guess.
Right. But is that something we want to relook at now? You know, do the principals think we need to reconsider the policy? Because I think it's based on being eligible for free lunch, but reduced lunch.
Added a high level, this is in my area. Dr. Nichols can speak better too. But I know from prior conversations, Dr. Nichols, the principals work with these families. They don't, it's not necessarily only the free to reduce. So they either set up a payment plan, they come up with a reduced amount for the families and say, hey, what can you afford? So it's a little bit more than just, hey, do you qualify for free to reduce and you get this discount? So the principals do try to work with the families if they know that there's any sort of financial difficulty.
Well, there's going to be a lot more now than there was in the past. And families need to know that when they're looking at this. As Ms. Randall said, we're putting this out for information. But once we approve it, that's going to be the, you know, the reset piece. So I appreciate these fees not being raised this year. You know, I think that's a good start. And I'm just saying, maybe we need to, you know, to take a look at it and make, you know, a year-by-year exception.
Okay. I think you were asking to repeat my comment. So what I was saying is what is being said again. Basically, I'm saying that I don't think that we should implement this right now, reduce fees because of the hardship of additional parents and students. And at the same time, there are some kids that want to participate, but because of the current policy, they may not, because of the cost, they may not let us know right now that they can't afford it. But I think that we need to relook the policies itself. But at the same time, make sure that we have something stating that you could participate. There's no funds that you have to pay at this point and you could apply for whichever, you know, activity you would like versus having it upfront like you stated, Ms. Hazard, that it's stating that they have to pay at once or at the beginning of the year. So we're saying all the same things, but I just want to make sure that the view was very well stated is that there's more hardship right now. And I just think that putting this out right now that the students may not participate because of the cost.
So I hear everybody. First of all, I appreciate everybody's sensitivity. I would maybe just offer what you're seeking. And I don't know what your policy is, and in all due respect, if your policy says they have to pay within the first 30 days, I think I'm hearing that the principals are showing you inside. That's your policy. I would always recommend you just set the fees and let the administration handle it from there. I'm just a little concerned quickly before we say no to the fees. And I'm not hearing you maybe say that, but maybe leaning that way. What is going to be the consequence of those programs and activities? Surely we're not in a position in our budget to offset all these fees. So we still have two weeks with the principals, with Dr. Nichols. I know he's on, he's listening to this conversation, writing down those. He's probably calling him right now. We'll have adjustments or justification at the next meeting.
Ms. Hazard, Madam Chairwoman?
Yeah, I was trying to reach out and say, Dr. Chase or Ms. Hollerback or Dr. Warner have any comments? So Dr. Chase, I'm going to start with you.
So I just want to back up a little bit what Dr. Kizner had to say. I mean, I think there is a lot of concern about what state budgets are going to look like and what kind of funds we're going to be getting and that our budget may get cut at the state level. So while I agree that it would be wonderful for us to be able to to cover the cost for students who can't, we do need to keep track of this budget. And if we can do that, that's wonderful, but there's a very good chance we won't be able to do that given what budgets are looking like. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Dr. Warner, do you have any comments?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, thank you. First of all, I appreciate Dr. Kizner's input. It sounds like the principals have quite a bit of discretion as far as these fees go in helping parents either make payments or meet some accommodation. And since we don't know what the school year is going to look like, this is just us establishing the fees. I think that's an important step to take so that we can kind of try to normalize our school year and normalize the budgets for these special programs and clubs. But I certainly would like to think that our principals have some leeway in how these fees are collected and in what students have greater needs. Is that true?
Yes.
Is that in the policy?
Well, let me ask Ms. Hollerback and then we'll do some. Ms. Hollerback, any comment?
No, I'm inclined to agree with Dr. Kizner and everything he said. I don't want to not advertise this, not have people anticipate it and then have it where people just aren't doing it because, you know, they didn't plan on it. So I think planning is good. Let's move on.
I'll just make a sort of a final comment. Looking at the attachment, perhaps we can add some language along the lines regarding collection of those fees. I think we've used it in other things. I mean, I can speak to taking some of the IB tests, which were not inexpensive and having to pay for five of them, which of course then got canceled this year, just saying. But they were payment plans. It was all part of the information that we got and it was very well, I thought, very well handled. But I think maybe making sure that that communication is on a, I don't want to say a footnote. It looks like it'd have to be on the next page, just something about that. So that would be sort of my suggestion, incorporating all of the comments maybe.
That's great.
All right. Well, moving on to information item 8.03 regarding payment to other technologies for Genius Enterprise Resource Planning, ERP, and other annual maintenance support. Are there any questions for, let's see, I guess that would be Mr. Fulmer? Any questions for Mr. Fulmer? All right. I'm going to take that as a hearing none, then.
We can explain it.
That's right. Next information item, 8.04, is regarding approval of the adoption of textbooks for, and I'm just going to say, I will let you all read them individually, a variety of subjects. So this one, there may be comments or questions. So actually, Ms. Healy, can I start with you and we'll go around? Do you have any comment? And I will hit, I will make sure I call on everybody on this round.
And if this is in the background, I apologize. How much of this is, are we paying for from Stafford County funding versus the state funding?
Yeah, so it's about 2.0 from the state and about, was it about 2.9 from us?
It's, you have 1.9 from the state and 1.5 from the local.
Okay. My only other question is, have we determined that we will actually use these textbooks? Because a lot of times in the long, in the past, we had comments that the textbooks didn't even get unwrapped. They were sitting on the shelves and.
That's a great question. Two parts to it. One is what you know that law, we do significantly do a request of books. So I just want to recognize Jan and Ms. Duffy for that. And second, I do have concerns that you're raising about how do we really know when we give these kids books taking it home, that they're really being utilized? This is far from a scientific study that I once had, I think I might have mentioned this already, a parent advisory committee. And that was, so I took advantage of students and parents there to get. And this was when they were reviewing different textbooks based on your policy, the school board, and the state bank. And I would have to tell you that that small group of students would suggest to me that not many of them are opening it up when it's at home. I'm not going to say all, some are. I would also say now, a lot of the books though, which I think is going to help us moving forward, have a digital component to it and online. So when you're buying these books now, you are not only buying the hardcover book, but you're also buying access to the software that aligns with the book that students have. I do think this is an area, and I know Dr. Strick is also listening tonight, where she and I have had a discussion so we could better understand the books that are going home. What is the usage of those own books?
Ms. Young, you?
Yeah. So Dr. Kizner and I did have this conversation about digital books. And I was wondering if we could talk about reversing it versus, so instead of getting the hard copies, we have the electronic, the number that we need, and then have hard copies for those students that are having issues with Wi-Fi and phone books. And so maybe we could do a study with that, you know, at some point in time so we will have more electronic and less hard copies.
Ms. Healy.
Okay. You have mentioned that you were in conversations with the board supervisors about trying to bring our phone book situation up to a one-to-one. If we're doing, if we're putting more money into going one-to-one, is it necessary for us to have a textbook then for every child? Would the digital textbook not be sufficient with a class set as an offering? In that, you know, if an IED 504, special need, whatever needs a text, but whatever special requirement is there to have a textbook that's available? Because like, you know, even with some of the ancillary materials that they get, the usage of them, I'm going to speak the foreign language. I think I have three Spanish, name the number, that are only a third of the way used in workbooks. And so to me, because I'm a three, my kids took it, but I just don't, I just, and even looking at the sports medicine, for sports medicine one and sports medicine two, I saw there's quite a number of books associated that. Maybe I don't understand how that is all coming out. But like I said, if we're going towards the one-to-one, is it more cost-effective for us at this point to be, and especially with next year so unknown and going forward so unknown, to have less money in the textbook and more money in the digital?
Okay. First of all, again, I agree with everything people saying. I just wish I had a better answer to you because I definitely have identified this as a concern, but I don't think I personally know. Jan and Karen, I know, are then listening to this meeting. I will say though, the access by the digital. I will say, though, the access, not the digital or if you have to purchase the textbook.
That's the only way to come.
Yeah, it doesn't, maybe the option is saying...
Yes, sorry, there is no reduced price for just the digital content of it.
So other counties that are one-to-one also still have to do these huge textbook, and are doing these huge textbook options? They're, they're not?
What the state allowed a few years ago was opening up to these publisher companies to have the digital component, but they truly don't say, you can either do digital or you could do books. You have to get the passage deal.
Right, cause like my nephews, they're one-to-one, but in Minnesota, but they do not have textbooks at all.
Well, I also say there are some school systems that are needing this complete digital platform.
Okay. I was very surprised, even in my daughter's classes, all this spring in college were all online textbooks. There was no which...
I'm, I'm more accustomed to a teacher having a, a set of books.
Right.
And then he or she will determine when the books have to go home with different assignments, than a book just going home.
Right.
So, so again, I, I recognize this. I feel and I know Dr. Strick and her team are looking at it and they, maybe just over a million dollars left to request of books.
Yeah, I don't remember the amount, but they're working on it diligently.
Try to skin it. I got you, thanks. I'm gonna move to, Dr. Chase, do you have any comments or questions about this item?
Yeah, so I, I just wanna say my own experience with textbooks and eBooks for classes is pretty much consistent with what Dr. Kizner was saying. You don't really, or, or if you do buy online only or digital only, it costs almost the same, if not the same, as the hard copy. So I'm, I'm not surprised to hear that. What I am surprised to hear, Dr. Kizner, is the, that students aren't necessarily using textbooks. And I don't know if that's because they're using the digital version, but I would certainly hope that students are actually reading material for their classes. I know my, my own experience with, with my children where there were times where if there was no teacher for the class, that they were reading the textbook themselves in order to learn the material. So I'm not quite sure what that comment meant, but I would certainly hope that our students are reading things in order to learn on their own some as well.
And, and being a researcher, Dr. Chase, I hope you heard my first part. It truly wasn't a scientific sample. It was a group of kids that picked up a tree meal and I asked a question. So I, I don't wanna draw conclusions based on that small sample, but I am interested in learning from the teachers and students, because there were teachers at that meeting also. And some teachers did before, when they get the books back, it, it had that crackling sound when you open up the cover, which you suggest. So I might think it needs to be investigated, but I surely don't wanna state today that it's not being used at a higher level than I think. It's just my, my...
Absolutely, I hear you. I just hate to think of, of our students ending up at universities with professors who expect them to be able to read textbooks and they're not able to. But I get it, this is just a, a very sort of anecdotal discussion of what, what's going on in our schools. Thank you.
Dr. Warner, any comments or questions, concerns?
No, I, I just, I share Ms. Randall's interest in the idea of moving towards more digital formats, especially since we seem to be moving towards a lot of remote learning. But I do think textbooks are an important part of a classroom and I do appreciate it when students know how to read them. So that's all.
Ms. Hollaback?
Yeah, and I'm gonna echo what Dr. Warner just said too. Every child learns differently. You might have a kid who can get on the internet and do all his homework assignments and then you have another kid who need, who can't be on the internet because of distractions and other things that needs to just sit down with a textbook in front of them. And then there's, they're also used as backup too. We have, we had that duratio several years ago. We had no power for over a week. It was nice to have books as backup, you know, even though it wasn't schooltime, there were books that my kids could actually sit down and read when they, when we didn't have any electricity. So that inconsistent internet sometimes. So, you know, I don't think this should, I think, I think the system's working just fine as it is, but maybe I'm just old school. Thanks.
The only comment that I'm gonna make on this is, I know, Dr. Kizner, you talked about your pseudo-scientific. I would be also interested in surveying the teachers and how much they're using the books. Because to me, the classroom is gonna be driven by how the teacher uses those textbooks. And some teachers may be using things in there, but doing it through work. I, I don't know, but I, I think that would be, before we, if we're going to look into this matter, which I believe that, that you are, it would be interesting to hear from, from the teachers as well in the same, in the same, I know, unscientific, but, you know, are there certain books that are being used or not? I just...
Absolutely, you don't wanna take a resource that's being affected the way. I, I think studying it through the teacher's eyes, the student's eyes, and through the parent's eyes is not a bad way of doing it. And we will do a next, sometime next year, come back with a, a better answer, a real answer.
All right, I very much appreciate that, thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, if you are using the prior agenda, we have, did eliminate the prior 805, 806, and 807. So I'm going to say 805, appointment of school board members to serve on the board's standing committees for FY '21. The main thing is just to begin to put this on for information, for board members to begin to think about committees that they might be interested in serving in the next school year. I draw everyone's attention to the email sent about the resurrection of the joint schools committee. So I just wanted to make sure that that was on there and I had communicated with the, on there, not their June 2nd, but I believe then their June 16th meeting to also appoint members. Because as we know, I think going forward, the partnership between the school board and local government is going to be critical in the coming months as education may be changing. And we just, we need to make sure we're all talking about the same things. So I know there are several committees that people's terms are expiring. So I would just say, begin to think about what committees you are interested in and you'll receive some communication potentially from this hall. This is similar to the 8.09 about our board advisory committees. I would only say, and this is up to the board, because most of our advisory committees this year did not get to finish their work, if we would like to keep the advisory committees the same, I'm certainly open to that. However, if you really, you know, do want to change, I'm just throwing that out as it seems like this year's advisory committees did not get to finish their work. So everybody think about, cause I think we're gonna have a busy year coming up. Not that every year is a busy year. So other than that, we, our next board meeting will be on June 9th. As Dr. Kizner said, he will be presenting with Mr. Cook, I don't remember if you said Mr. Fulmer, but I'm throwing you in the mix anyway, to the board of supervisors. Dr. Kizner, do you know if that's a, are they having both a 3 o'clock and a 7?
It's a 3 o'clock meeting.
At the 3 o'clock meetings, so certainly board members with free to certainly tune into those meetings. And...
I need to say one thing, because there's a lot of discussion. To me, if you feel a little better, you do have your policy, and the superintendent does really challenge sure that the fee of charge is either reduced away for those students who are unable to afford them. You have language that gives the authority to do that. Anyway, you're not, you're not mean spirit, you're caring, loving people.
Madam Chairwoman, can we add that to the agenda item at the next time so that the parents will, will know when we approve, when we actually approve, you know, a reschedule, that that language from the policy be included in that, that listing so that, that all parents will be aware of that when, you know, they're getting there, when they're making their decisions.
I think that was our suggestion, and yeah, I think that was the end of it. So other than that, thank you all this evening. I will see you on June 9th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We are...